Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is a public meeting of the zoning board of appeals and I am Howard Tracy, the chairman. Tonight, we have two public hearings, Richard and Nancy Solomon of thirty-seven sixteenth T Street, Plum Island, in the village at Cricket Lane located at fifty-five R. Pearson Drive, Byfield. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. ZBA members, Eric Svan.
Here, present.
Mario Canavelli.
Here.
And from the planning board, Larry Murphy.
I'm not seeing him.
Okay. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Mead, town council.
Yes.
Introduction to the remote meeting. Good evening. Today is Thursday, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, at seven-thirty P. M., and this is an open meeting of the zoning board of appeals, which is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID- nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends a requirement of the open meeting law. We have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the ZBA is convening by telephone, video conference via Zoom, as posted on the agenda of the zoning board of appeals, section of the town's website identifying how the public may join. You may participate by going to H T T P slash zoom dot U S and entering meeting ID eight-two-five-one-eight-eight-five-zero-one-one-zero and pass code six-nine-zero-seven-five-two, or by calling nine-two-nine-two-zero-five-six-zero-nine-nine, entering meeting ID eight-two-five-one-eight-eight-five-zero-one-one-zero, and if prompted, enter pass code six-nine-zero-seven-five-two. Please mo- excuse me, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Material has been provided to ZBA members and documentation is also available to the public on the town's website. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Howard Tracy, the chairman, will introduce each item on the agenda. As a participant, we ask that you keep the following in mind. Please mute when you are not speaking for a telephone star six. Uh, mute, unmute button, or computer click on or off mute button. Please use earbuds, earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that as video participants, you are attendees in a meeting. Participants can be, can see you and care should be taken to eliminate interruptions while you are participating on your computer. Anything that you broadcast on your video will be captured by the recording. I will yield the floor to the applicant or representative, and will invite them to present their application or further information that was requested. If the applicant and/or their representative were to share their screen, please request through the chairman, so that you can be given permission to do so. I, Howard Tracy, the chairman, will afford ZBA members the opportunity to request to speak and ask questions at any time. Further, I will afford public comment by participants as follows. I will seek questions through the raised hand function. For video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participant option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Cover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. Window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see the list of phone and video participants, and on the bottom, you will see the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You may rename by using the more function next to your name. List your name, address, and then your question. Telephone participants can use their phone keypad while in Zoom meeting by raising hand by hitting star nine. I will seek the call upon questions from the public that have hit the raised hand button in the order which they are listed. Please identify your name and address, and then your question or comment. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We will continue down the list of those in the raised hand column. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns that were received, they will be read for the record at this time. We will now move to the agenda. Eric, would you read the agenda for us, please?
Sure. Agenda, public hearings. So the first item on the agenda, Howard, is review draft decisions for Seacoast Canine, Jennifer Ford, and Cottage's LLC Plum Island patio. And I would, if I could, if I may, add an update to those.
Sure. Go right ahead.
Joe, I know the drafts were submitted to all members. Any individual comments were collected back. I know the only comments that I had in terms of the drafts were some just missing information, and so then a final copy was sent out, which was signed and has gone out to the members. So I believe this issue is, is, um, is no longer necessary.
All right. I agree. Thank you.
Okay, so the first.
Yep, go ahead and move on.
First public hearing. Richard and Nancy Solomon, thirty-seven sixteenth T Street, Plum Island. The applicant is requesting a binding for relief from section ninety-seven dash four D of the Newbury zoning bylaws, as the proposed construction will increase both lot coverage and the floor area ratio, F A R, for the property located at thirty-seven sixteenth T Street, Newbury, Plum Island, Mass, on assessors map U zero-three dash zero dash five zero.
Okay, is the applicant or their representative with us tonight?
They're both here. Doug, Doug DeShane is raising his hand.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas DeShane representing Nancy and Richard Salmanin, also their son Eric Solomon, who actually lives in the property with his daughter. He is on the line with us this evening. The Solomons would like to make some improvements to their home on Plum Island. They want to remove some exterior stairways, one of which is non-conforming.
Excuse me, Doug, could I just ask you a question? I, I received an email that said there was an issue about butters. So are you aware of what I'm talking about?
I, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I was just excited to get going. Yes, as it turns out, sir, my office made an error in that the abutting towns were not notified of the hearing. All the butters were notified, and we provided the return receipts to the town. However, the towns, the abutting towns were not notified. I do understand that if we go forward with this project, we are at risk in that any one of those towns could appeal the decision for lack of notice. I've discussed that with my client. We're understanding of the risk, and we would respectfully, at this point, like to move forward accepting that risk. Quite frankly, in light of sort of the, the minor nature of this request, I, I'm confident that none of the towns would find a need or a desire to appeal a decision, depending on what decision is issued. So with, with the board's approval, we would like to move forward.
I'm just going to refer this to town council and see if she agrees with you. Lisa, could you weigh in, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. DeShane is correct. It's a risk he and his client can take. It's not an issue for the town, and he can be permitted to go forward, understanding that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeShane, go right ahead then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I do apologize for any inconvenience my error caused the board and town council. Um, as I said, the Solomons would like to make some improvements to their home. They want to remove two of the exterior stairways. One of them is non-conforming as to building code. They want to rebuild those two and make sure they're both completely in compliance. They want to add a small second floor addition to the home. It's approximately one hundred and four square feet in size. And then associated with that, they want to do a roof deck with a exterior spiral staircase. Additionally, they, they want to basically do some architectural improvements to the home, windows, siding, some architectural details. I've provided the board the plans from Graph Associates showing the proposed changes to the home. Um, I do want to add that since we filed and since the final plans were designed and submitted to the board, we are in fact not increasing the lot coverage of the, of the, of the site. With the changes to the stairways, there is actually going to be a, a small reduction in lot coverage. However, the, the first request of our application, which is to increase the F A R, is in fact the case. The proposed addition will result in an increase in the FAR. As we've stated, it is currently non-conforming at thirty-two-point-six-one percent. The one hundred and four-foot, uh, square feet of addition will increase that to thirty-four-point-zero-six percent. However, as I said, with the changes to the stairways, we will actually be decreasing lot coverage and therefore do not need a special permit. There will in fact be no changes to the footprint of the structure itself, and there will be no changes to the height of the building. Therefore, we are, because we are seeking to increase that pre-existing non-conforming F A R requirement, as determined by your building commissioner, we do need a special permit. Please note, with all the description I gave you of the work to be done, it's really the hundred and four-foot, uh, hundred and four-square-foot addition that, that drives the FAR increase, and so that is the work subject to the board's review. I'll also respectfully remind the board that the standard review for this permit is, requires a determination from the board that the proposed increase in the F A R will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. To that end, Mr. Solomon did in fact reach out and, and visit with each of his abutting neighbors to provide them a copy of his plans and to discuss what he's doing and to let them know and see if they had any questions or concerns. And after that work, and it turns out that nine of the twelve neighbors that he did meet with have all signed a petition, which I provided to the board earlier today, stating that they were not opposed to the project. So Mr. Solomon has, has, I think, done a lot of work in making sure that his neighbors understood what he was doing and understood the impacts, so that he could show them that it would not be detrimental to them. Some of the facts I'd like you to consider in, in determining whether or not this is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood are as follows. The proposed addition and all the work proposed will be done in accordance to, with both state and local building codes, including the improvement of the stairways to meet codes. And they will be greatly improving the aesthetics of the home with the, all of the improvements they are proposing. The addition, which is on the second floor back portion of the structure, is pretty innocuous. It, it's very de minimis by the time they put the new siding on and the architectural details that, that have been proposed. I, I, I find it hard that anyone will even notice that it exists. Certainly only a butters to the rear will even be able to see it. Therefore, the exterior work or the exterior view of the, of the structure to the neighbors will certainly not provide any detrimental impacts. And in fact, with the increased value to the Solomon in home and the impacts that that has on neighborhood values, and given the dramatic aesthetic improvements to the home, I think in so, in many ways, what's being proposed here is actually beneficial to the neighborhood, certainly not significantly detrimental in any way. In terms of the interior impacts, there are going to be some walls changed and, and, and a hallway created, a bedroom created. Those will all be internal and will not be viewable to the, to the neighbors in, in any way. But again, they are all going to improve the value of this home, which will help to improve the value of the neighborhood. So given the de minimis increase in the F A R, going from, as I said, the current thirty-two-point-six-one percent to thirty-four-point-zero-six percent, which reflects just a little over four percent increase in that FAR, I, I do not see that this would be, I'd ask the board to consider that this is not going to be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood in any way. Happy to answer any questions, the board, I have, Mr. Chairman.
So I have some. Evidently, your clients advertise the property on Airbnb, and according to pictures and information they provided, they use the shed as a bunkhouse, shows a, a sleeping quarters in the shed, uh, which now, which is illegal. That would, by that use, they already have three bedrooms. Now they're proposing a fourth, which is not allowed. Also, there's, they advertise a bonus room in the basement, and I don't see anything on the F A R sheet that includes the basement as F A R, which would, again, increase the percentage higher than what you're proposing in the application. And from my memory, I can't, I, since I wasn't aware of this before today, I wasn't able to do any research, but I think previous owners for this house were in front of the board years ago and had an application for some expansion at that time. So I don't know if you can address any of my questions.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will do my, the best I can to answer them. First of all, with respect to the Airbnb use, I, I, the only, I, the only such use that I'm aware of, as I discussed late this afternoon with my client, is that he did in fact rent the property last week, last year, for a total of six weeks to a retired couple. I have no knowledge of the, of the shed or what it is or what it's used for, and I do apologize for that. With respect to the basement, I do believe that the basement has been shown on the.
Maybe I missed it.
No, that, and that's fine, Mr. Chairman. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm learning some new things here myself. I did provide to you the existing F A R worksheet provided by Graph Architects, and it does in fact include the entire basement. It shows the entire basement in the square footage, and it was included in the, the FAR calculation. And as far as the, the proposed FAR calculation, so there is four hundred and ninety-six square feet of basement shown in that calculation. Mr. Chairman, I, 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 again, I, I do not have information with respect to the, the shed slash bunkhouse, but if, as you've pointed out, that is not a legal use. And, and certainly, I will be counseling my client with that, to that regard. But in terms of the number of bedrooms, Donna, could you get my plug, please? My battery's running out. In terms of the, uh, use of the shed, again, being illegal, I, I will let my client know that, but it, it, there are only two existing bedrooms in the home itself. They are showed on the architectural plans, and so we are only requesting to add that third bedroom, which as I had read under your bylaws was in fact in allowed use, so.
But evidently, your clients haven't read our bylaws as well as you, because they are advertising a fourth bedroom.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, again, again, I, I, we will be taking that, I will be taking that matter up with my client, and I will certainly be counseling him on the, on, on the illegality, if that's in fact being used as a, as a sleeping arrange, a sleeping place, a bedroom. But again, legally, and according to your assessors, as well as the engineer and architectural plans we've provided, the house currently has only two bedrooms. We're asking for a permit for the addition, which would allow us to have three bedrooms. And again, I will certainly counsel my client that those are his only, or would be, his only three legal bedrooms in his facility.
Okay. Okay. Eric, do you have any comments, questions?
I have a few, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Um, as I would start to say, that the aesthetic improvements and the addition is seemingly small, the application, as you had stated, was previously before us, and the, both the F A R and the lot coverage are over the P I O D thresholds. And then, too, I have several items with the application that I noticed, and there's some little things, but they are discrepancies in terms of the form and the worksheets not being the same. In terms of the lot coverage, the application is twenty-three-point-nine-six, and the form listed as twenty-three-point-six-seven-six. So there's a discrepancy there. The lot coverage does not seem to include the stairs or the shed or the deck, and as they are on the site plan, not everything is dimensioned, and on the floor plans, which are almost to scale for the printed copy we received, come up with a, a slightly higher number for the total lot coverage, which would bring it up to twenty-seven-point-three-five, three-point-three-six. There are some overhangs that exceed the twenty inches, and those do not appear to be included in any of the F A R calculations. Again, the F A R in the application is listed as point-three-four-zero-six versus the form, which is thirty-four-point-five-nine, so I think it's just a typo of putting in a point decimal percentage as opposed to a percentage number. The enclosed basement does appear to be included. I did notice the shed, and the shed is on the property line, so it does not meet ten-foot side yard setback. Um, and I don't know the exact overhang, but they seem to be more like three foot six, because the elevations, the plans seem to be almost an eighth-inch scale as submitted, but the building elevations do not scale out. The front setback is indeed fourteen-point-eight, fourteen feet eight, and not twenty, but a nearer established building line does appear to be established. I was looking at the one-plus bedroom, and it seemed to be okay in light of the information that you had provided, and there was a flood zone map that was provided, but that would be for Conservation Commission, and so has the applicant filed with the Conservation Commission at this time.
I, yes, sir, we, we filed with Conservation Commission, and the commission did issue a, an order of conditions for the project. So if I could address some of your questions, Mr. Svan. Through the chair. I, I, I have to be honest and say that I relied upon, on the architectural F A R worksheets in applying for the application. To the extent there's a typographic error, I do apologize, but again, I, I, I relied on the architectural F A R calculations in doing the application, and, and based on that, it, I, we did propose that the increase would be from thirty-two-point-six-one percent to the, to the, to the higher thirty-four-point-zero-six percent. With respect to the lot coverage calculations, again, I, I had to rely on our, our, our engineers, and I guess I did not notice. Well, actually, when I look at the, the lot coverage checklist, the shed is in fact listed there, as are the decks. So I, I, I apologize, but I'm a little confused as to the, that statement that we were, that we didn't include those in our lot coverage. I cannot speak, sir, to the overhangs, um, because you are correct that on that same lot coverage checklist, we are listing no overhangs greater than twenty inches on the building. So, um, again, I, that, that information was from the architect, Elaine Graff, and I, you know, I will have to verify with her that in fact those overhangs are less than twenty inches.
Right, and if I may jump in and say that, you know, first, I looked at the site plan and started calculating out, calculating out areas to check, and although it's small, your application says shed at one oh one, one hundred and one square feet, and the dimensions used from the site plan tell me it's one hundred and two-point-nine. So that, you know, it is slight, but it raises suspicions about how things are calculated, and then I went back to calculate the deck, and the deck does not seem to be three hundred and twenty-one square feet, but five hundred and twenty-eight square feet plus the two stairs, and the stairs, yes, are smaller, and the overall footprint is smaller, but again, trying to understand how large the house is in terms of lot coverage and F A R for the site that it's on comparable to the neighborhood, just looking for accuracy.
And, 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 Mr. Svan, I, I, I don't blame you for that, and I apologize to the extent that there is, there are inaccuracies here, and in fact, I, I can't possibly expect the board to make a determination as to the impacts of the, of the proposed work to the neighborhood unless you have the exact numbers as to what impacts that is going to have to the F A R, and, and certainly verification that my statement is true, that this will result in a reduction in lot coverage, because, you know, at least it's my position that a reduction in lot coverage could be viewed as a, a positive impact to the neighborhood. But unless we've provided you completely accurate numbers, I, I can't make that argument, and I, I do apologize. Perhaps the board would afford me the opportunity to go back to our architect as well as our engineer to verify that all of these numbers are correct and, and to provide you any changes or, or, or other things that we need to do to these plans. Again, I do apologize to the extent that, that we have misinformation or perhaps inaccurate information, but as I said, I, I had erroneously presumed that the architectural submissions and the, and the engineering drawings were in fact accurate, and that's where I took my numbers from. So I do apologize, and perhaps the board would afford me an opportunity to continue, so that we can go back and make sure that our information is one hundred percent correct.
We'll, we'll certainly consider that, but I, I. We'll, we'll certainly consider that, but I, I'd like to see if Mario has any questions or comments, and then the public, and then we'll discuss the continuation. So Mario, do you have any input?
Just some additional information on the roof deck. We really haven't talked about that. How large will it be, construction of it, what, what type of deck would it look like, and things like that?
Would you like to address that?
Again, the roof deck, in terms of materials and, and, and what it will look like, I have provided you the proposed exterior elevations provided by a graph architects, and, and you'll see that those elevations do all show the roof deck. It is not resulting in an increase in height on the deck, on the, on the structure. It is not increasing the FAR or the lot coverage, but I did want to present to the board all of the work that was being done to the site, so that you can see the overall aesthetics as they would look when it was completed, in considering the, you know, the view of the neighbors and, and impacts to them. Do you have a specific question in terms of the materials to be?
Just the size, the size of the deck, how, how large will it be?
Okay, let me I, I, to be honest, I'm just looking through the architectural plans to see if it, in fact, provided us numbers, and again, as was pointed out earlier, while these, all of these drawings are scaled at one-eighth of an inch to one foot, there isn't, there isn't a specific dimension given for the deck. Again, if I'm afforded the opportunity to go back and, and, and get this additional information, I will make sure that the architect puts dimensions on every, every structure proposed.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mario?
Mario, if I jump in and try to just generally answer the question, the deck is the deck is shown on the site plan, if it's the addition to the house, which is six foot by eighteen five.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Is that the roof deck you're talking to, Mo, or?
Yeah, it's about a hundred and, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve square feet plus.
Thanks.
Martha, do we have any raised hands?
I don't see any at the moment. Oh, wait, Steve, Steve Manchin is raising his hand.
Okay, we'll listen, listen to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I take it this is the part for public comment, and that's what I'll address, if that's the appropriate thing.
Right, that's.
Okay, I, I had sent a letter to the zoning board, and the basic underlying concern in my letter has to do with, you know, congestion and overbuilding on, on Plum Island. And that's one of the concerns, I think, that was built into the P I O D. I, unless you ask me to, I will not read the letter that I wrote. But again, the underlying concern is the number of bedrooms. There certainly is advertised, the bunkhouse is being used as a bedroom, which is, if it's legal, would be a third bedroom to begin with. I recognize there may be some issues to settle about what needs to be done with the bunkhouse, but I would suggest that as long as it's possible to use it as a sleeping area, and the photos that were in the Airbnb and I provided to the board clearly show that it's being used as a sleeping area with the beds that are in there, I see that as a problem for the project as designed. In addition, I have a concern about whether the basement itself, which is now being shown as a living area, could be used for sleeping. I think the answer to that is no, particularly if a third bedroom is added to the second floor. But that's the status of the living area in the basement, I think, needs to be resolved by the board and the applicant as part of this. I note that you noted as well that previous property owners had come in to get a permitted expansion of the first floor, to expand slightly the living area. And that resulted in an increase in the floor area ratio, which was accepted by the community at the time. And to see a proposal that goes beyond the limits envisioned by the P I O D, to have another proposal coming in that further expands it, is a little bit troublesome, because I could see how time after time, things keep on getting bigger and bigger. So that's an underlying reason that I'm concerned about the project as described at this time. I'll note that the previous owners, Ms. Cooper and Ms. Ford, did not use the basement as a living area at all. It was used for storage. I, you know, knew both of the previous people that were there. So whether turning the basement into a living area is a concern, is something I don't really know, but it's a question I put before the board, since, in effect, it becomes a three-story house, once you start making that a living area, as opposed to a traditional basement. In saying that, I'm not arguing that the utility area, where there's a furnace and the like, should be counted as a floor area ratio concern, at least I don't think it should be, but it, the rest of the basement certainly looks like an area that is now become a three-story, making it a three-story house. When I looked at the plans, I had some confusion, and I asked the question in my letter about whether all the interior stairs have been included in the calculations, and if that's been handled satisfactorily. I certainly can't tell, so it's something I'm just putting before the board for your consideration and to take a look at. I'll also note something about the footprint, which hasn't been mentioned before, and that though I have no objection to outdoor showers, I think they're a great thing to have on Plum Island. I don't know whether that has to be shown as part of the footprint issues for the project. The idea there is that, oh, we're going to get to a point where we exceed the footprint limitations. Again, I like outdoor showers out there, but whether that enters into the footprint issue, I think, again, is a question I put before the board, because I don't know the answer. Thank you for getting on to the roof deck. I'm certainly concerned about the noise that could arise from the roof deck at late night, but if it's not a concern for the Z B A, well, so be it. I should mention, I guess, at this point, and I'm an immediate butter, and I'm across the street from the subject property, I'm not distant from it. And as such, if bedrooms or living spaces increase too much, you can have a situation where just the car traffic gets to be an issue for us immediate butters. Again, I don't know that's a particular concern for the Z B A, though maybe it is, since I think at some point it does become detrimental to the overall neighborhood to have so much car traffic, particularly as you see Airbnb operations including, included. So I did attach the full Airbnb ad, so you can take a look at that, and it sounds like you have. And I believe those are the things I wanted to go over with my concerns about the project. I'm going to do a quick check of my notes, if you don't mind, but I think I'm done, and I also appreciate what the board also brought up about whether the overhangs get to be an issue in terms of the limitations imposed by the P I O D. I hadn't thought about that, but I'm glad to know that you are. So ultimately, it comes down to a question of bedrooms and living space, and that's the underlying concern. How many bedrooms, how much living space, and of course, how is it enforced? I can imagine that one could take the, the shed in particular could end up being used as living space, even if you take the beds out of it, it could become a game room, a place for people to be, and maybe if there was a couch in there, people could end up sleeping there. So it'd be back into a space that effectively functions as a bedroom with a concomitant use of the facility. And with that, I'll close, and I appreciate that you gave me as much time as I took.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, in response to some of those questions, I, I understand from my client that he doesn't have an outdoor shower, but we will verify that. Again, I, I can only, you know, seek some time to go back, to have the architects and the engineers verify all of these questions and sizes. With respect to the shed, I, you know, if, if the shed is a concern, which it clearly is, I certainly would need to discuss with my client the, the possibility of his willingness to eliminate the shed, so that the the board and the town in general would not have any concerns for, that it may be later used for legal purposes. With respect to the basement, we have included the basement in our FAR calculation.
That I, when I went down the list, I didn't see the basement down at the bottom, so you did include it, that was my error.
And however, again, there are a number of mechanisms that I could propose to my client and to the board as, as a possible condition with respect to, you know, some kind of covenant or deeded limitation on the use of that lower level as a bedroom space. I don't think the board or the town or the building inspector would, would say that my client can't use the basement for a, a playroom. I think many of us and many people on Plum Island utilize their basement space for an extra room or a playroom, although I do agree with you that it cannot be used as a bedroom and, and, and will not be. So, Mr. Chairman, again, I, I can only say that I would respectfully ask the board to give me some time to go back and to work with our engineers and our architects to provide you utterly accurate information, so that you could make a reasoned decision on whether or not, and, and this is quite frankly what it all comes down to, is whether or not the hundred and four square foot addition on the second floor will, in fact, be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, again, I'd ask the board's consideration.
So I think we'll probably be scheduling our next meeting without talking to Martha for dates, but probably the third Thursday of the month, so would that be enough?
Mr. Chairman, anything you'll give me is acceptable. We certainly can get that work done. I, I can tell you it will be done, you will begin to do it tomorrow. But yes, certainly, February third would be much appreciated.
The third Thursday, whatever that date is.
That would be the eighteenth.
February eighteenth.
Okay, so.
There, there is, Mr. Chair, there is a hand raised right now. I don't want to know if you want to take any other public comment.
We'll take one more, if there is somebody.
See, James Stewart has his hand up.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, to the chairman and the board, my name is Jim Stewart. I live at twenty-two Old Point Road, but my house is a lot closer to Sixteenth T. I'm on lot U zero three dash five one, so you can see on the map where I am. I'm a direct butter to thirty-seven Sixteenth T on the backside of my lot for a span of seventy-five feet. I have four items I'd like to briefly comment on, if I may be allowed to do that.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So I'm referencing the PDF that was put up on your website. And if I look at page one of that PDF, which is a cover letter from Attorney DeShane, paragraph one says that the FAR goes from thirty-two point six one percent to thirty-four point oh six percent. This is repeated on page four of the PDF, which is also noted as page two A of the application form. I believe this number is supposed to be thirty-four point five nine percent, as shown on page seven of the PDF under written documentation, paragraph two C, and also further down in the very last sketch in the entire PDF in a, in a drawing called FAR one, which I would think should be labeled FAR two. But in any case, a legend labeled existing FAR, which I suppose should be called proposed FAR, shows one eight one six divided by five two five zero equals thirty-four point five percent. So rounding down instead of up to thirty-four point six from thirty-four point five nine. I don't know that any of this is decisive, but I assume the document should be correct and consistent, and also note that the difference between thirty-four point oh six and thirty-four point five nine represents a twenty-seven percent difference in the one point nine eight percent FAR change that is being proposed. Second item, I take issue with paragraph four of the written documentation on page seven of the PDF. While the exterior and interior changes may enhance the rental income value or the resale value of thirty-seven Sixteenth T, the statement saying that either or both will have benefit to value of homes in the neighborhood is opinion and conjecture. In my case, I'm concerned for a variety of reasons that the project will, in fact, have a detrimental impact on my home value, and so I asked of the board to disregard these opinions in paragraph four in your decision-making process. Number three, there would appear to be some potential issues with the use of the shed in the basement as brought up or submitted by Mr. Manchin, which I believe need to be fleshed out, as I am uncertain how those items impact the overall proposal. Last item, number four, I believe the board should turn down the request based on the FAR increase to an already non-conforming structure. Many of us own non-conforming structures out here on Plum Island, and are well aware that development limits have been put in place ostensibly for good reason. I think they speak for themselves, and there should be no gray areas, just black and white, or else where does it end? So whether it is renters or residents, this project represents an increase in capacity for the dwelling, and I see no compelling reason or demonstrated need for an exception. I would hope the rules are applied evenly to all of us, and therefore, I oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Okay, Martha, anybody else?
Yes, I see Mr. Romano raising his hand. Ask him to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me? All right.
We can.
Okay, Alan Romano, thirty-nine Sixteenth T Street. I'm across the street from the home in question. I'll be real brief, I just want to say I agree with Mr. Manchin and Mr. Stewart. I don't know if it matters to you people, but this house is a rental, and it's got people coming in weekly all summer long. The more people they can put in, the more people are going to be there, so I'd rather not, rather not see it get any bigger. That's all.
All right, thank you.
I don't see anybody else.
Okay, unless Eric or Mario, you have any other input to this, I would like to entertain a motion to continue until February, I didn't write it down, February what? Eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, if I may, before
Yep.
we get to any motions. As you had mentioned, that there was a previous application on this property that submitted an argument for expansion in being not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and as the increase, as it stands and presented, does seem minimal and insignificant at, in light of other errors or any application number errors, the one thing before us that we haven't given any direction or request on is the, is this previous expansion and, and what that means for, you know, homeowners that you know, homeowners that would submit and then come back and revise and and tweak. Uh, and the second part.
I I just want to respond to what you're saying. I I did bring it up, but I don't remember any details from the hearing. So I would certainly, uh, before we move forward at the next meeting, I would like to see the minutes and the uh, uh, all the information uh, from that hearing.
So that that's where I was going with this, is that um, I'd be willing to make a motion with a couple of conditions if I may.
Yep, go right ahead.
So I'll make a motion to continue to February eighteenth um, on the conditions that the previous uh, application and um, finding that was made on the property is um, is pulled out of records and submitted both to the ZBA and back to the applicant. And that they weigh that seriously in their motion of um, of not more detrimental on what they're asking on top of what was previously granted. With with that understanding, I would ask that we continue the hearing to February eighteen.
We have a second?
Second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, Eric?
Rule, yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes, we'll continue uh, with those conditions to February eighteenth. And expect that all the uh, errors in the application are corrected so that we can look at uh, an accurate uh, application. Is that satisfactory, Mister DeShane?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I thank you very much. I certainly appreciate the board's time and consideration. And I, I will promise a um, completely accurate application next we meet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There is a hand up.
It's Mister Manchin, but it has been continued.
We've continued, so you'll need to uh, join us on the eighteenth. And if he'd like to submit any information, uh, you can email and we'll consider it. Okay, so let's move on. Eric, you ready?
Yep, I'm ready now.
Yeah, okay.
Public hearing. Cricket Lane LLC fifty-five R Pearson Drive, continued hearing. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive permit under general law, chapter forty B, section twenty dash twenty-three to construct the Village at Cricket Lane for twenty-four single-family detached home ownership units on accessories map R twenty dash zero dash seventy-five.
I know you're there, Mister DeShane, are you ready?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I'm sorry, I was just trying to get reorganized.
That's okay.
But I am organized and 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 good evening, um, members of the board, Mister Chairman. Uh, Douglas DeShane representing Cricket Lane Development, uh, with me this evening, Walter Erickson, manager of Cricket Lane Development, as well as Ben Osgood, um, from Ranger Engineering, our our engineer. Um, when we last met, Mister Chairman, um, one of the outstanding issues was um, final review of um, Ms. Martin, uh, in her environmental review. Uh, you'll recall that she had um, done a number of reviews of the project. We had revised things. And at after the last meeting, um, we did go through one final round of review and um, revisions with uh, with Ann. Um, and Mister Osgood can speak to that if if the board wants more details. But um, at the, at at the conclusion of that analysis, Ann did provide to us, and I know she provided to town council and and to the board, uh, a listing of seven mi- very minor changes that she wanted shown on the final plans. Um, and then I guess today at about four o'clock, uh, she sent over a a request for two again, very minor word changes uh, to our um, uh, one of the maintenance documentations. Uh, all of those changes are are more than acceptable to us. And uh, and Ben, if maybe you could just uh, expand a little on that as to what Ann asked for and and our ability to get that done. And um, I will say, Mister Chairman, that I understand that um, Ms. Martin also stated uh, that with those seven revisions, um, all of her comments and questions have been addressed.
Yeah, so they're very minor comments. I think, you know, dealing with labeling the plans, uh, labeling some tables, just to, when I spoke to Ann, she's thinking about when this is being constructed, that the contractor has very clear concise direction and there's no ambiguity. Um, and she just, there are things honestly that she wanted to have on there to make um, her life easier. If she is an inspector or any inspector's life a little easier to deal with the contractor. So, um, very minor changes, we can have them done within a week. Um, but we just would like to kind of wrap up and have one more. Uh, here, here's everything, you know, that we don't know if the zoning board may suggest a change here or there wording. Um, we just would like to do one more revision. The uh, plan set is thirty plans long. It uh, you know, starts to get cumbersome to issue multiple plan sets on a weekly basis. So we'd like to uh, just limit it to making one more revision with all the changes that anybody from the board, uh, Joshua K or Ian Martin would like.
Mister Chairman, I want to be clear that we're not suggesting that this hearing be extended any further, that we have any further reviews. I think what Ben is saying is, before he makes those final seven minor changes to the plans and submits them as final, um, we want to hear from the board this evening whether they are accepting of Ann's uh, changes and her statement that provided we make those changes. We have satisfied all of her concerns. And also, uh, wanted to see if tonight's meeting, where I understand we may be discussing waivers, if that in fact results in the need to make any final little tweaks or anything to the plans. You know, Mister Osgood wants to just make them all at once. So if there are no other changes that come out of tonight's meeting, uh, we will just uh, institute uh, Ann's changes and provide those final, final plans to the board next week.
Okay, so uh, my opinion as far as Ann's work is uh, long as that is going to be in the final plan, that's fine with me, but I want to hear from Eric and Mario. So Eric, uh, is that satisfactory to you?
The the process is satisfactory. Um, not sure what we'll come up with or what changes would be requested, but um.
I'm just talking about Ann Martin's uh, report. Okay, Mario?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, so we've got that cleared up. That was easy. Okay, so, uh, we've had some emails. We had a petition in opposition from approximately sixty Pearson Drive residents and four or five other Newbury residents. Uh, did you uh, get copies of that, Mister DeShane?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I did. Thank you.
Okay, and Bradford Smith submitted a petition or a a letter, oh no, a petition. I guess he's the one that submitted that petition. And then we received a letter from Dan Linden, who is uh, spoke at probably every meeting we've had questioning the examples of forty B projects that you provided that you said are similar. Uh, in his contention, and I don't know if he wants to speak to it, is that they aren't similar to this project. So I'd I'd like to uh, uh, address those two things and anybody else from the the board or the public. And then we'll move on to reading the waivers and you can justify uh, why you need them. So, uh, do you have any response to uh, the submitted petition?
No, Mister Chairman, um, I I I assume it speaks for itself. There are name, are, it is not surprising that there are some abutters um, on Pearson Drive that have opposed this project and uh, they certainly have the right to uh, submit that petition.
Okay, uh, Eric, any comments on the petition?
I think the um, petition has a fair amount of examples uh, that back up the concerns of the number of units for the roadway and location in terms of traffic and traffic and safety. And I think uh, you know, one of them does show, and the other thing that I do see in in some of the research that was done for um, the comparables is that either terms of size or density are much smaller. Uh, and in terms of some of the larger um, proposed projects, there was a reduction in unit size um, that was agreed to as part of the project, to state that for the record. So I think it does bring up safety concerns for roadways um, and access to the site.
Thank you, Mario.
Uh, I would have to agree with Eric, you know, regarding the traffic and uh, traffic during construction also, uh, would probably be an issue too.
Okay, very good, thank you. We'll go to uh, public comment now, Martha, and see if uh, either person that submitted petition and the letter, we'd like to speak to it and any other public comment at this point.
All right, Dan Linden has raised his hand.
Okay, Mister Linden.
Thanks, Mister Chairman. Um, yeah, I just, you you know, I don't know if this letter can be made available. Um, I know there's a lot of things on the website, so, um, and I only submitted it earlier this week. But um, so it's a little difficult to talk about this, but I I think my my major problem was when we talked about how this project would be you you know, interpreted in the context of what's been done before for forty Bs. So folks don't like when there's a development next to their house, and that's understandable. Our argument has always been that this development is strange in that it's adding a neighborhood essentially to the end of an existing neighborhood. A quiet neighborhood, a loop that people use. Um, I said in my letter, you know, not only Pearson Drive residents use it, other folks from the town of Newbury use this neighborhood when the weather's nice. And so adding a neighborhood at the very end turns Pearson Drive into a throughway. And the examples that the the applicants provided for other projects that did something like this, none of them actually replicate this. The only one that's that's comparable potentially is this enclave in Norfolk, which you know, I I, in my letter, I noted that there are differences for that one too, including the fact that it's not at the end of the cul-de-sac, it's it's in the middle. It's actually at the start of the cul-de-sac that provides a loop and the loop is left intact. So for example, if the green space at the entrance of of Pearson Drive were to be the entrance for this development, um, there would still be a lot of of concern about traffic and the rest. But you could argue that the rest of Pearson Drive would remain intact for for residents to use, right? There's no increased traffic on the main loop of Pearson Drive, if that's where the development entered. Because it's entering at the very far end, every single house on the loop is impacted by the traffic that's that's going to result from this development. So again, there are no examples where that has been allowed in the examples that were provided here. In the examples that were provided, um, either it's a dead end with a few houses that had a development attached, which, yeah, if you live at a dead end, um, and you don't know who owns the property at that dead end, then anything goes potentially, right? Maybe more importantly, a lot of these examples are in high-density towns. And some of the examples, I I'm not really sure why they were even included, which is is a bit aggravating for me because I wasted my time trying to figure out, you know, what what do these other projects look like? How did they change these neighborhoods? There's two examples from Falmouth that have no bearing on this project whatsoever. One of them is a four-house project. Okay, so if you want to add four houses to fifty-five Pearson, I don't think anyone would would object to that. The other project was a huge apartment complex off a main road. So, you know, I I'm just, my frustration is that this is a project that is very unique in that it potentially destroys the the atmosphere of a well-known neighborhood in Newbury. And so, you know, we we've argued this multiple times. Um, I I won't say anything more about it. The letter speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Bradford Smith with a raised hand.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
You'll need to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, this is Laura Smith. We're at six Pearson Drive. And I'm, I actually have quite a few questions again to um, follow up here. One is that um, we were a part of this petition, and it's not just a few abutters that have signed this. We have a hundred and forty-five signatures of every single house on Pearson Drive. Every single house that completely opposes to this development going in for multiple reasons, for the quality of life, for safety, for traffic, for storm drains, for inefficient water supply and pressure and environmental impact and wetlands, but mostly because it should never ever get a throughway and an entrance to another development. It's totally wrong, but a hundred and forty-five people have supported that this is absolutely a wrong thing to do. So I just wanted to state that. And on and on top of that, the last meeting, we were told that the people at fifty-seven, which their names are Calls, Nick and Christine Call, were supportive of this development coming into their backyard. Well, we have been in communication with the Calls, and they have updated their feelings as they are adamantly opposed to this being in their backyard. And they actually submitted a letter, which I would like to read for you if you had time, um, that shows that they really have, want nothing to do with this being in their backyard despite what was reported the last time, at the last meeting. Shall I go ahead and repeat, read what they said?
Please, how long is the letter?
Uh, uh, two paragraphs, just two paragraphs. Their, their names are Nick and Christine Call, and they now live in England, but they're well aware of this happening and they were unable to attend the meeting tonight because of the time difference. So at the previous meeting, it was stated that they were supportive of this development, but in reality, they are not. So this is what they write, "To whom it may concern, upon reviewing the plans for the Village at Cricket Lane, we homeowners of fifty-seven Pearson" Upon reviewing the plans for the village at Cricket Lane, we homeowners of fifty-seven Pearson Drive have some very serious safety concerns and objections to the new development, period. Safety is our big concern for us. We ourselves have two small children. Our children enjoy playing in our yard and bike riding in our neighborhood. The curve at the bottom of the cul-de-sac has a blind spot, often making it difficult to see cars coming. This has been a problem in the past with increased traffic. This could be a very serious issue. Per the application, it states that there is approximately two hundred and forty plus cars driving throughout the neighborhood daily. The neighborhood currently lacks sidewalks and with increased street traffic, this is a major concern for us. The increase in large vehicles and trucks due to construction heightens the safety concern. Due to its location, our home will lose much of the privacy we sow treasure. According to the plans in unit number one is directly in the back of our property line. We will lose a lot of the trees and the flora that provide us with the privacy. It is important to us that our children can play freely and safely in the privacy of our own yard. Home number one is directly behind us and slightly elevated. The plans have some mention of a fence behind our property, but no mention of privacy trees and how much vegetation they will remove. Also, no mention of a fence along the side of our yard where the street will be. Safety and privacy are very important to our family. It is of utmost importance that we maintain the safeguarding of our children and the children of the neighborhood. Please consider our objections. Clearly, they are not on board with this happening. I can continue on with a couple of other questions if that's.
Yep, please go right ahead. Just try not to repeat things you've already brought up if you can.
Well, well, I actually do need to revisit a question that I did bring up last week, if that's okay. You, I had asked about what changes allowed that were making the land that was not buildable now to be buildable. And I think that the planning board mentioned something about that an entrance changed. I'm wondering if we could expand upon where the entrance changed and what other changes happened to make a non-buildable land buildable.
I'm not quite sure what you're asking, Eric, you.
Oh, the whole, yeah, the whole property at one time was not buildable because of the wetlands that divide the property or sit closer to Orchard Street. So if you were to right now, the sole of frontage on the property is off of Orchard Street. So you cannot access the rear part of the property. The fact that there is an easement given by somebody on Pearson Drive opens up the property to be accessible.
Is that what you mean by the entrance change from Orchard Street to Pearson Drive?
That's my understanding. Yes. Well, yes.
When I, when I was at that meeting, which I was there when it was deemed not buildable, the entrance was at Pearson Drive. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been there if it was at Orchard Street. So it was deemed not buildable at that time. I gave you the date the last time from Pearson Drive. So I don't know what entrance changed on Pearson Drive.
Okay, so I could be wrong with that in my past history and understanding from the previous application. And
So what other changes occurred to make this land deemed not buildable on the meeting that I was there? So now it's buildable.
I might be able to address this and then maybe Martha can pop in. So if a standard subdivision was being proposed, it would have had to meet all the local subdivision rules and regulations and local zoning. This is a forty B, a comprehensive permit application, which does not have the same constraints.
I appreciate that. That was a forty B also at the time when we went, we reviewed it and it was deemed not buildable at that time also. It was a forty B already on the first application. And then, and then it was said not buildable.
Excuse me, you said it was a proposed subdivision in front of the planning board. So the planning is not here. The planning board does not hear comprehensive permits.
Know what that means.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I guess I just don't understand.
We're trying to get another answer for you.
Oh, thank you.
Right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
I just wanted to bring up Walter Erickson, I'm the proposed developer of the site. I just wanted to state that I met Mr. Nicholas Call at his site on his lot last year. The plan hasn't changed significantly since we met and we talked about plantings and screening behind his house. I have not been in communication with him since then. I don't know who or how they obtained another letter from him, but we did meet on site and Mr. Mr. Call, Nicholas Call had no problems with the development of the site at that time. That's what we represented to the board.
Right, okay, thank you. So, back to Ms. Smith?
Yes. Well, I think that the calls, and I am not speaking directly because I didn't speak directly to the calls, but I can tell you that they were accepting of the fact that they were being offered, should we say, incentive by fencing and landscaping to help out the situation, but ultimately they state themselves that they absolutely have opposed this from day one. So once someone is is misinterpreting what was said.
So maybe you can submit that letter to the board for our record?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I and I, so my next question is we haven't really answered the questions about why it was considered not buildable and then now is buildable. That still is a question that I'm feeling not really comfortably answered.
I think Town Council alluded to this or maybe just, it's not buildable for a subdivision through the planning board, but because it's a forty B project. It doesn't have to follow the Newbury town zoning bylaws. It's follows the state rules and regulations for forty B. So it's two separate issues. You can't compare, it's like comparing apples to oranges.
So do you know how many regulations that were in place that made it not buildable in the past that we have to overlook for it to become?
I have no idea. I think probably
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we're going to go over on the agenda tonight is to go over the requested list of waivers. And that was submitted originally with the application. It has been updated since with the changes in the plans. And that has been provided, that was provided, I think, a month or so ago from Attorney Duchesne's and it's on the board's agenda this evening to review that.
Okay, that will be helpful. Thank you. That would be great. Okay, another question I have. Has the developer entertained all the options that Martin Burns has offered for this land to be have a different access to not use Pearson Drive as an entrance?
I think that Martin Burns Wildlife has not responded to any request from the applicant. So we went over that a few meetings ago.
Yeah.
And they're non-responsive, so the applicants moved on from that.
Okay, well, then maybe I'll try to reach them and see if I can get through myself then. Okay. Um, and I was wondering, has the zoning board written, received any written or verbal correspondence from the Mass Housing Association? Or do you need to answer to the Mass Housing Association in the decision-making process?
Mr. Chair, I can help you out with that. So the applicant has provided a project eligibility letter. It's a requirement as part of the application for the Mass Housing Partnership. And once the comprehensive permit is issued, the applicant will go back and verify with Mass Housing relative to make sure that it meets everything. But that's already been done. It's a preliminary requirement before the comprehensive permit is even issued. I mean, excuse me, is even filed, applied for.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. So next question then, if I may. I was curious is what is the relationship with the current developer to the previous developer that was denied because of a criminal record?
Mr. Erickson, can you respond to that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll respond to that.
Yeah, sure.
We, there are, there is no relationship with the previous developer. I believe that that was a that that issue was discussed and resolved early on in this process. And and to now suggest that there's some kind of relationship is just unreasonable. We
No, I didn't suggest one single bit. I'm just wondering how did it change hands from the previous developer to the new developer? That was my question. Did he sell it? Did it have, how did that change hands? That was a simple question.
My, my, my client made arrangements to purchase the property, yes.
He did, okay. He's not standing in. He just, now it's a total new developer.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, he is a whole new developer.
Okay, um, let's, on the other, the next question I have is that were, is there any plans to inform the buyers at Cricket Lane that they're buying a home that borders a hunting ground?
Well, we haven't, we haven't discussed that, but if that is a condition of this permit, my client will certainly agree to that and to that condition.
That that they would, the buyers would have to know that they're buying land that a hunting ground is right on their backyard?
If the zoning board would like to make that a condition, yes, we will notify, but I I would assume that in the sale of these homes, the fact that it abuts that Martin Burns area would would be potentially proposed as an amenity that the project abuts that conservation land.
Not with guns. Certainly not. I can, we can hear the guns in the backyard. I mean, really, it's it's major. You can hear the guns going off all the time.
Was answered, so please move on to the next one.
Yes, well, thankfully, I just have a couple more. What was the regulations that is going on with public transportation that's being allowed that we need to have access for forty B?
Maybe a little clearer on that.
My understanding is that in order to have a forty B development, you need to have public transportation within reason? Is that something we are addressing?
Well, I guess it's interpretation, it was brought up in previous meetings. Was brought up that there's no public transportation close by. And it's the applicant's contention that it's close enough. So that's
Chairman, that's not quite
I'm sorry.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you, Ms. Smith. You asked earlier about the involvement of Mass Housing in this and Town Council told you that my client had to file for a site eligibility letter from Mass Housing. Part of that application did require us to provide a listing of what if any public transportation was available in the area. We did provide a listing of available transportation methods in the area or that were available to the site. We did provide that information to the state. And based on that and a whole lot of other information, the state deemed this site eligible for development as a forty B. This board and and certain members of your community suggested that we had misrepresented that information. I did, in fact, then provide it again to this board with a justification of where that data was obtained and and I don't believe after there was any question that the information we presented was accurate. And it is in fact accurate. Most of it came directly from the town of Newbury. But it is true that different people have different opinions on whether what we do have available constitutes sufficient public transportation. And all I can say to that is we do believe it does. Mass Housing believes it does. And everyone is entitled to their opinion, but there are no trains or buses directly adjacent to the site. We all know that. But there are methods of transportation that are available through the town and private organizations, and that's what we listed. So again, that was deemed sufficient by Mass Housing.
And in addition, Mr. Chairman, it's it's not a requirement. It's not a requirement in Mass Housing regulation that public transportation be available. I have done two other forty Bs that do not have any public transportation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Smith, one, another question or we?
Well, I think it's the last question. Of course, it's probably the most important question because as I went about the street kind of risking my own life, as I say, and illness around. I, I feel like the the weight of a hundred and forty-five people that have signed this petition should be significant enough to convince you that this is very disruptive to many, many families, people, children, that it is, shouldn't even be past the consideration of as far as it's gone now. I, I am just praying that you listen to what we've said and and just how unreasonable and how disruptive and unsafe this development will be for many, many people. Please listen.
Okay, thank you for your input. Okay, Martha, do we have anybody else?
Yes, Melissa Goldner.
Hi, thank you, Martha. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I'm going to ask forgiveness that this is only, I think, the second or third meeting I've been able to come to this year regarding this matter. I'm a teacher, so we've had quite a bit going on that have prevented us from joining these meetings as often as we like. I am a resident on Pearson Drive. I live at nineteen Pearson Drive with my husband and two small children. I have a kindergartner at Newbury Elementary School and I have a three-year-old son who goes to preschool in Raleigh. And we have a dog like everyone on Pearson Drive. And I just, you know, I wanted to come on and just echo what what Brad and Laura and Dan were saying. There are a lot of us with small kids on the road. Seven thirty is bedtime, so it's really hard to make these meetings. It's actually past my bedtime now. But we moved on to Pearson Drive because it was a nice little dead end with a loop. There are no sidewalks, you know, there's a little bit of charm in that because the kids kind of just go out and and can run around and play with each other. And, you know, my daughter can now ride her bike to the Linden's house. And that's why we purchased here and that's one of the things we love. Dan talked about how the community uses Pearson Drive as well, not just Pearson Drive residents or Orchard residents, but Pearson Drive is kind of over, I think, the decades from what the older residents have shared with us has been kind of the haven for Halloween. And even this year in COVID, we made Halloween happen for our kids socially distanced. It was, it was remarkable. And, yeah, it's devastating to me to think that after eight years, eight and a half years living here, that my little neighborhood is going to become a throughway. You know, I think that a lot of us could swallow this pill a little bit better if we weren't the entryway. But you are trying to build a development off of our development, off of our community, and that's frustrating. We have quite a range of political, this whole political spectrum on Pearson Drive, it's actually kind of cool. And when you have every single person on Pearson Drive, every single, every single household representative that we are all adamantly opposed to this, it speaks, it speaks volumes. I am glad Laura brought up Martin Burns. As as a parent, I would not want to purchase a house that close to Martin Burns' hunting ground. We can hear the gunshots and I'm actually on the other side from where the development is supposed to be. I also am concerned about the impact on the wildlife in the area, and I know these are Um, I also am concerned about the impact on the wildlife in the area, and I know these are things that you guys have probably gone over. Like I said, I'm a teacher, so I haven't been able to attend all of these. This summer, we had coyotes in our yard, um, because of all of the developing that's been going on around us. So there was, uh, an orphaned baby coyote that was literally hanging out in our yard. Um, as more development encroaches on the area, as you take away the area around Martin Burns, um, for more developing, we're gonna have more of that happening, and, uh, it makes me concerned because our pets are being, are being taken. Um, we have lots of chickens on the, uh, on the street. We're thinking about getting ducks this year. Like, we, we need to, to preserve, um, the, the homes for the wildlife so that we can all coexist peacefully as well. So that's one of the big things that I haven't, you know, heard talked about too much that is really important to me. Um, so the safety, the safety for us, the safety for the wildlife in the area. Um, and, you know, there are a lot of us that haven't been able to come to all of these meetings, but we're paying attention. Um, Brad, Laura, and Dan keep us pretty well informed, um, and we do oppose this project. And, uh, we really hope that the zoning board, um, will take our pleas, our pleas to please, um, deny this request and, and let our community remain the, the peaceful community is. And you know what? Provide 40B housing in an area that does make more sense than an area that is closer to the T station so that, um, the people that live there can get into Boston, um, or to their, to their jobs. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate you listening to me, and thank you all for your hard work and consideration. Um, my husband's a school community member, and so I know that, um, our town officials are underappreciated. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else, Martha?
Um, Mr. Linden would like to speak again.
Okay.
Thanks, I just, uh,
Something.
Sure.
If you could, something new.
I just wanna point out, um, you know, in conversations I've had with a lot of the residents, um, like Melissa, folks have thought that this was a foregone conclusion, um, because of the nature of 40Bs. I wanna point out that, that the zoning board does have the authority to balance the regional needs for housing with local objections. So this is something that I, that I put in the letter, and I know the zoning board knows this, but it's something I've tried to tell to other residents too. The point you have in these conversations is for the zoning board to be able to, to make that calculation in terms of the balance. So when I've brought up, you know, what is this development doing for affordable housing in our town? It's not doing much. It's adding four units. Um, they're not very accessible to public transportation. What are they really going to add, uh, to the town in terms of affordable housing? You're not gonna add much. It's gonna be a twenty-four unit, a development that really impacts local residents more than it, than it benefits the town. That's all. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Erickson.
As the proponent of the development, I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments based on the feedback that we're getting from residents after, you know, ten months, eleven months of public hearings. One of the reasons that you all like that neighborhood is why this project will be successful. You know, we'll be providing affordable housing for firemen, schoolteachers, uh, homeownership opportunities instead of an apartment complex. Instead of having a forty-eight unit apartment building, we're actually gonna have homeowners there that become part of the community that you already have. Every single one of the town's consults, consultants and our consultants have addressed fire, traffic, environmental, septic, water pressure, uh, civil engineering. We have satisfied every single one of the town's consultants. I've paid forty thousand dollars in engineering fees to have your consultants critically review our plans. And all of your consultants have been satisfied with our plans. I, I can understand that the neighbors are upset about a 40B development. I haven't been greeted anyplace where I've done a 40B development, but I still wanna be a good neighbor, and I think this project is gonna add a lot to the development, and it'll bring a lot to the town. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Martha, anybody else?
I'm not seeing any other raised hands. Oh, yes, Mr. Godzic is raising his hand physically. And you will need to unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. Um, I won't take much time. I know it's, it's been a long meeting, but especially after these past comments, I just have to, I just have to say something. My opposition is, is just so strong that, and, and when she, when he mentioned about everybody agreeing that there was really no problem with this, with this project. I, I harken back to the, the traffic study, and a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty trips, I believe, a day were added. And then the next comment was, but it won't have any effect. I mean, that's ridiculous. I, I don't, I don't know what the credentials of these people are, and I have to respect how much work they put into it, but you can't get a resident to understand that a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty trips a day added to the traffic has no effect. And those are the exact words, I remember them, "has no effect." Also, I just wanna mention, and I, I had mentioned it before, but I feel strongly about it, the town of Newbury, there's a precedent being set here. And developers gonna use the hammer of 40B or shield, whatever you wanna, whatever analogy you wanna use, to go elsewhere in town and do the same thing. And you're gonna have the same hearings, the same ten, twelve months, and it's gonna happen, happen again. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Just looking. I don't see anybody else raising their hands.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Welcome. Oh wait, uh, uh, the Smiths have raised their hands again.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Erickson, I just wanna clarify your comment that this neighborhood is not against 40B development. The, the neighborhood is against an increase of a hundred and fifty cars going up and down our street, which the bottom line is the safety of the children, the people that walk the neighborhood. That's the major concern here, that you're using our street to access your development, which, and, and we totally support the affordable housing, but you're using the opportunity for 40B in order to put a development in where it doesn't belong. So never mind about that you're gonna do wonderful things for our neighborhood and our town. That's just not the case. And I wanna make it just one more, clarify, we're not against 40B. We're against the development and the increased traffic and the lifestyle that it will be affected negatively and the safety of everybody that's on the street.
Thank you.
I see Bart's iPhone. Raised hand.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't put my last name. It's, uh, Bart Bracken, sixty-nine Pearson. Uh, it's a question, I think it might be to the council. Um, Mr. Linden, uh, referenced, um, the comments that people have been making that just because it's 40B, it automatically will pass. Um, and I, my question is, what is the latitude of the zoning board to reject this development? And what does that look like? Um, what are the ramifications of that?
Okay. Lisa, can you address that?
Sure. Um, so Mr. Linden is partially correct that the, um, the board needs to balance, uh, the need for affordable housing um, in the town, uh, but there's an automatic presumption that if you do not have ten percent, then, um, you don't have sufficient affordable housing. And the only way that you can reject a proposal is if it either endangers the environment, um, provides imminent harm to public safety, or removes critically needed open space. Those are three very, very high standards. Um, and so the board needs to think about that as they consider the application, which is why they engaged a number of professional consultants, um, to review the application before them and have gone through the process that they've gone through, um, as well as listened to the neighbors. So there's an automatic presumption if you are not at ten percent relative to the need for affordable housing, and you move to the next step.
Uh, Lisa, do you know offhand where Newbury is? Refresh my memory.
I believe you're at three, Martha. A little over three percent.
It's three point five percent right now.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay.
And Melissa Goldner has her hand raised.
Okay.
Hi, thanks. Um, so in terms of the town percentage, um, what would this project put us to? And then I would also just like the committee to then consider, um, the fact that our, our community, um, on Pearson Drive would then be kind of being punished because the town has not put forth a friendly 40B plan um, in recent years. I know there was one rejected a number of years ago, or at, got to a certain point a number of years ago before I moved into Newbury. But, um, I, I really would prefer to see a proactive approach to 40B housing so that we can meet that ten percent threshold. Um, but at a bare minimum, I'm just curious at what these four units would put us at.
Uh, does anybody have an accurate answer to that?
I think our, our total number right now is ninety-six units, so this would bring it up to about a hundred units.
So a very small percentage increase.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone else, Martha?
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody else now.
I would just say, uh, a comment of, I think for Lisa, uh, maybe you can explain to the, the residents, what are the ramifications if this is denied? The application is denied, uh, what that incurs for us?
Sure, if the, um, well, if the board denies the application, um, without a basis, right? Um, or if, you know, if it denies it and the applicant argues it denies it without a basis, the applicant has a right to appeal this to the Housing Appeals Committee, um, which hears all comprehensive permit appeals. Um, and so that, that's where it would go, and that's the standard, um, upon which it would be judged.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Eric, anything from you before we move on?
I think he's muted. Eric, I think you're muted.
No, Mr. Chairman, not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are you taking any further public comment? Melissa Goldner has raised her hand again.
Okay, we'll take one more. This will be it.
Thank you. Just for the record, um, we just did a very quick calculation. This would raise us to three point six percent of affordable housing in Newbury, so.
All right, thanks. Okay, so, um, I think we'll, uh, move on and read the waivers and the applicant and justify why they need them. Uh, Mr. Duchesne, would you like to read the list and, uh, give us a response to each one?
Uh, sure, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, and I'm working from the waiver list that had been submitted to the town. Um, uh, first of all, we list the waivers that we would need, uh, from chapter ninety-seven, your zoning bylaws. Uh, the first one, section ninety-seven dash three, one, um, your bylaws require that there can only be one principal structure per lot. Um, and as you know, we are proposing, uh, twenty-four, uh, structures on our lot. So, um, clearly, without that waiver, um, we would not be able to build more than one structure, which would, uh, essentially make the project, uh, unbuildable. Um, chapter ninety-seven dash nine A, under your spec- special regulations, would require site plan review, uh, for this, uh, project. Um, however, uh, given that this is a comprehensive permit, uh, site plan review is not required. However, um, we do still ask for that waiver, just so that it's clear, uh, that no site plan, uh, review would be required. Um, ninety-seven dash six B, dimensional regulations, lot frontage. Um, your, your zoning bylaws require, um, a frontage, um, a frontage of, I believe, two hundred feet, uh, for lots. Um, as you, as we've discussed at length, uh, our lot technically, uh, does not have frontage on Pearson Drive. Uh, in fact, it's accessible via the easement we discussed. So we are seeking a waiver in that lot frontage requirement, um, as we do not have it. Uh, and yet, um, we are accessing over the easement. Um, with respect to your non-zoning ordinances, chapter one seventeen, um, and the town of Newbury subdivision of land, um, we looked to see and assumed that, um, this project would be subject to, uh, your subdivision control regulations. And to the extent, uh, we're able to meet them, we do so. However, there are a number of requirements that we are unable to meet, and so have sought, uh, waivers from those specific requirements, and I will run through them, uh, as quickly as I can. Uh, most of them, I believe, are self-explanatory. There are a couple that I will, uh, ask Mr. Osgood to jump in to, to help me, uh, in, in providing the technical, uh, basis for the waiver. Um, chapter one seventeen dash five, again, there is a requirement for only one structure per lot. Um, we are proposing twenty-four. One seventeen dash twenty E requires property line radii, a radius at intersections. It requires a thirty-foot radius that speaks to when a road, subdivision road, uh, enters onto an existing road. Uh, there are supposed to be thirty-foot radiuses, uh, at that intersection. However, again, uh, we do not have frontage. Uh, we have a fifty-foot easement. That easement, um, intersects with the existing Pearson Drive at a ninety-degree angle such that we have, uh, straight lines, uh, into the road. So there are no radius curves, uh, at the end of our, um, intersection with the, with Pearson Drive. Um, one seventeen twenty-one, the cul-de-sac, you have a five-hundred-foot maximum requirement or maximum allowed under your subdivision regulations. Our road is proposed at eight hundred and forty-five feet. The seven, again, under seventeen twenty-one, uh, your subdivision requires a fifty-foot right-of-way. Our roadway is proposed at a forty-foot, uh, right-of-way size. Um, one seventeen twenty-one, street grades, um, your requirements are two percent minimum, ten percent maximum. Uh, we do have an area at the front entrance of the property, uh, where our slope or our grade of our street is slightly below or is below two percent. Um, and so we need a waiver from that, although I will, I will mention with respect to all of these roadway waivers, um, we are proposing this as a private drive, um, accessway into the project. We are not proposing that our driveway or that our drive, technically our driveway, uh, will be required, will be proposed as a public street. So it is a private street. Um, and with respect to that, street grades, um, we have satisfied your peer reviewer in showing that, um, with those grades, we can still meet our stormwater regulations. So there will be no impact, um, to that, uh, minimum grades, uh, height or percentage. Uh, section one seventeen twenty-four, within your subdivision, uh, regulations speaks about required open space or recreational space, although, uh, it is listed as a discretionary, uh, requirement. Um, we're not proposing any, so we assumed the safe, um, the safe route here would be to request a waiver from that, even though it's discretionary. However, as you know, um, we have, uh, on multiple occasions, reached out to Mass Fisheries and Wildlife, um, asking if they would like, um, that five acres of, of, of land adjacent to, um, the wildlife. the wildlife conservation area. And again, no response. Earlier responses were that they weren't interested and then they have subsequently wouldn't even return my emails or calls. And as we've proposed to the, to the board, we'd be happy to donate that five acres to the Conservation Commission or to the town as conservation land. Otherwise, we are just going to make it part of the homeowner's open space. So while we're asking for the waiver, if the board decides they would like us to donate that land to the town or to the Conservation Commission, then I would suspect we are in fact meeting that regulation. 117-33A, drain pipe materials. Your, your regulations speak of concrete pipes. We are proposing the use of HDPE-type pipes, which I understand is a, is not unusual request. And we did not receive any comment, comments from your peer reviewers or your highway department that, that the use of the HDPE pipes was a problem. Your regulations, subdivision regulations, section 117-34 recommends and encourages bike paths. As you know, we are not proposing bike paths. And so we've sought a waiver from that regulation. And I am getting close to the end here. Chapter 117-35, monuments. Your subdivision control regulations require monuments at all intersections and points of curvature in the roadway, right-of-way. I will remind the board that, or it's my understanding that the reason for that requirement is because in most subdivisions, the roadway will eventually be, you know, submitted for acceptance as a townway. And then either through an easement or actually a deeding of the property, the town would accept it and, and maintain the roadway. Obviously, within that easement or the deed of conveyance to the town, you would need those monuments for the survey and whatnot. Again, this is not proposed to be a town road. It's a private accessway. And so, you know, the installation of monuments are really unnecessary. There's no reason for them. So we've requested a waiver of that requirement in light of the fact that we will never propose the roadway to be town-accepted. I had listed a waiver under 117-41, tree plantings. The regulations essentially make it a discretionary requirement. And recall that originally we were not proposing trees. However, in working with this board and with Ann Martin, we are now proposing a whole host of, of street trees, street, or tree plantings. And so if the board is accepting of that tree planting plan as proposed, then there would not be a requirement for the waiver. However, if the board is unaccepting of the trees that have been planted or that have been proposed to be planted, then I would, I would request the board consider that waiver. So that's, that, that's with respect to the trees. Lastly, there, or not lastly, but next, there, under 117-59, your subdivision rules and regulations require a nitrogen and phosphorus loading calculation, which here's where I'm going to get a little over my head technically, but my understand that the purpose of requiring those calculations is that then in requiring design of the stormwater management system, that those calculations are taken into consideration. As you know, we have proposed all of our stormwater and drainage control in conformance with the state and local stormwater management guidelines. And that has been reviewed and essentially approved as meeting those requirements by your peer reviewer. And therefore, we would like a waiver from the necessity to provide those calculations, which at this point would be, are useless. The other waivers requested are under your chapter 87, Stormwater Management, the list is Discharge and Erosion Control Regulations. There are two. One is that we are, would be required to receive a permit from the stormwater permitting authority. Again, as this is a comprehensive permit, we believe that that permit is, is part of the comprehensive permit. However, again, as I said earlier, it has been our practice to seek a waiver from that so that the question is, is, is answered if someone should question whether in fact we need a separate permit or not. And that is the same case with chapter 87-5, Administration. Again, we are, we did design the stormwater system in accordance with the handbook and Masti EP regs. That's been reviewed and, and verified by your peer review consultant. And therefore, we do not believe we need a separate stormwater permit, that it is part of the comprehensive permit. But again, we technically request the waiver so that there are no questions. Those are our waivers, Mr. Chairman.
Doug, can I just chime in for one minute?
Please, Ben.
So Joe Suwaka, actually, he did reference a, what he called a requirement to use LID measures, which is in the subdivision control law. You know, I, I read through the required, the subdivision control R again today, or actually, I think it's in the stormwater, the stormwater regulations. The, I didn't see a requirement to use LID. What it said was curbs and gutters should not be used unless LID is not feasible. And it's at the discretion of the permit granting authority. So I don't know if, if we should address that as a, as a waiver or just a clarification. But there was, Joe Suwaka mentioned it. And I just, I didn't read it as a requirement. I just, I read it as it's something that needs to be considered before you use curb and gutter.
Can you just give me a brief summary of what you're talking about?
LID stands for Low-Impact Development. And basically, it's country drainage. You know, I mean, you, you have roads that are out in the country in Newbury where they have a swale along the side. There are no catch basins. It might be covered on the road at a, at a wetland crossing. But all the water flows off into a swale and down the side of the road into the wetlands. You know, that, we don't have that type of a system. It's very difficult to do when you have a house that sits back 20 feet from the road. It's hard to put a drainage swale. You know, off of the, have a sidewalk, a drainage swale, front yard in a house. It's really not something that's feasible. You know, in a, in a development that's more of a cluster concept. So that, that's why we're, you know, we, we would ask for the waiver to use the curb and gutter type system that we've designed.
Okay, thank you.
And do you happen to have the citation as to the regulation you're speaking about? And again, if the board's determination that it's not a requirement, then, then we would not need the waiver. However, if it, if it is in fact a requirement, we will have to seek a waiver from that specific regulation.
So let me, I'm, I'm going to change my story a little bit, a little bit. The subdivision regulations say Ella, low-impact development is preferred. It does actually stay, say, in the stormwater regulations. And I guess it would be under the purpose and applicability item three, low-impact development measures are to be used. And then it goes on to say, where applicable, the Conservation Commission's consideration of waiver requests may be influenced by the amount of low-impact development measures included in the project. So I don't know which waivers they're asking, what, what they would be talking about, whether it will be a waiver of a Conservation Commission requirement, but I don't know that they have any or a waiver of that requirement. But so we would ask for a waiver that of that section. Now, we do have one LID measure we use. There are, I mean, there, I guess there are a couple. We're infiltrating roof runoff on individual homes. And we do have a constructed wetland. One of our areas, the first area, stormwater area on the right-hand side of the road is a constructed wetland. And that is a, you know, I think is falls in the LID classification. But otherwise, our stormwater system is conventional.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, for the record, I, I would request a waiver from chapter 87-3 with respect to the requirement that low-impact development be used unless the board determines that the limited number of LID components that we did use would be satisfied, would satisfy that requirement. I mean, it's hard to, to understand low-impact development are to be used. We did in fact use some. It's not entirely an LID system though. So I think for safety sake, we would request the waiver from section 87-3.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question to Ben, please?
Go ahead, Eric.
So Ben, in simple terms, LID would, would be preferred or is required for developments that would meet the Newbury zoning bylaws for size of site and property development?
Correct. If you, if you think about a conventional two-acre zoning, you, you have a lot of area to do low-impact stormwater items, ditches. You know, they, they, they call them, you know, fill, in-ground filters and bio-retention areas. You have a lot, they take up a lot of room sometimes to, to develop those things.
Right. So the, the point being is that it can't be met because of the density of the
Correct.
proposed project.
Correct. But I would say too, part of the LID low-impact development concept is cluster. Now you have, you know, granted, we have a relatively smaller site, but you have 24 homes, which are going to be on a smaller area of land in Newbury, which would normally take up 50 or 60 acres. So that's where the, the clustering becomes almost in itself an LID.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Eric or Mario?
I guess I do have a few comments to ask.
Yep.
So in, in terms of the first waiver, whether it's 30, 97-3, one in terms of the use or 117-5 and one principal structure per lot. I mean, the Newbury zoning is a builder's lot of 40,000 square feet. And the site is 15.8 acres. So even if the whole site was usable in perspective, you, you might be able to get 15 houses on the site. And so that, that's just putting it in perspective of what's, of what is being asked or how much is being asked of this, of the site. Of that 40,000 square feet, the smallest lot is 4,500 square feet, which is only 11% of the typically required. And the largest lot is 6,764, which is only 16.9% of the typically required. And those are for single-family lots. The second comment in terms of the biggest one in terms of safety is, is 117-21 and the cul-de-sac maximum length. It's just to be noted that it's typically 500 linear feet and what's being requested is 845. So the 345 additional square feet is, is a 69% ask additional increase of that length. The width of the, right of the way is 50 feet and what's being proposed is 40 feet, which is 20% less. And then this street grade is less than the 2% minimum, open space, although they're requesting a waiver. There is some recreational space proposed. And then I have no comment on the drainage pipe material. The bicycle path, I guess, you know, certain times if paths aren't useful, if the path doesn't connect to a, a greater path or a bigger system. No comment on the monument. Tree plantings as described, we're seeking a waiver, but there are some trees being proposed. No comment on the nitro phosphorus, phosphorus calculations. So I just wanted to make a couple statements about perspective of, of what's being asked of the waivers. Thank you.
Okay, Mario, anything?
No, I think Eric did a good job of covering some of the issues and concerns.
Mr. Mr. Chair, may I just make a couple of clarifications?
Sure.
The required right-of-way is actually 53 feet, not 50 feet. And I think Mr. Duchesne mentioned a 200-foot frontage and it's actually 125 feet in the residential agricultural district.
Okay. You're right.
And just for clarification, the Conservation Commission is actually the stormwater permitting authority. So they generally do review that during, during their notice of intent review.
Okay. Lisa, if the preservation is the town admitting, town permitting authority on storm drainage, should we be even talking about that?
Yes, you, you, you sit as the permit granting authority for all local bylaws and regulations. The Conservation Commission will only be reviewing this under the State Wetlands Protection Act.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And let me just ask a little advice from you is where do we go in the process now?
So I, I provided to the board an outline of what a decision would like not to go through it tonight and, and just everybody that's on on here to understand that, that this board, permit granting authorities always make a motion in the affirmative. Whether or not the person making the motion is going to vote for it or whether or not the board ultimately votes for it, a motion is always made in the affirmative. And then it, you go from there, whether it passes or doesn't pass. So typically, what I would do is, is the, a decision like this includes the entire procedural history and includes all of the information that was put forward to the board. It includes the prerequisites under under 760 CMR 56, which are the comprehensive permit regulations. And then it would go through all the peer review findings and conditions and all of the issues related to binding the development if in fact this board decided to approve this. And so based upon, you know, the comments that I've heard, I have kept along with my colleague Adam, who's been at a couple of these meetings, have pre, kept very, very specific notes and marked various conditions that we've heard the board express and, and concerns that they've expressed. So what I would do is I would go through and I would do a draft decision based upon the conversations that the board has had in accordance with this outline. I would give that draft to I would give that draft decision to your peer review consultants to add their own conditions and/or verify that what I have added is appropriate to cover the issues that they've raised. And then I would provide it to this board that we would then review together at a meeting. So that would be what I would do next. And so we would need Mr. DeShane and the applicant's permission and agreement to extend this to the next meeting, at which time prior to that meeting, I would provide a draft decision to the board for its consideration.
Chairman, we're happy to grant that extension or continuance and I can provide it in writing in the morning if you would like.
Thank you.
Okay. So do we need to vote on continuance?
Yes, to, I think the February 18th meeting, it's acceptable to the board.
Great. Okay. Can we have a motion on continuing this until February 18?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to February 18.
Second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, Eric?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council for your time and consideration and we will see you on the 18th.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lisa, you still with us?
I am.
Okay. So if, if the board, after the board looks at your, this is just procedure, not specific points of the applicant's, you know, request, when and if we wanted to request changes or condition, other conditions, when is that appropriate?
It would be then. So I'll hand it to you. I'll make sure the board has it in advance. So that you can have it in advance and we can have those discussions at that, at that meeting.
Okay. Okay. And at what point or how do we know if we're asking for something reasonable? If we decide, you know, I know we have to have an open meeting. I, I understand that, but that's the point where if we wanted to make changes to your draft, we would propose them at that time?
Right. And, and we, and we would have the discussion at that time.
Okay.
Right.
And it's freely to be able to discuss with you whether we're heading in the right direction?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure we have good direction.
Yes. Absolutely. I would ask, this decision is going to be unlike most of the other decisions you're used to. It's going to be, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be 10, 12 pages long at least. And so I, I would ask the board to carefully review it and you'll, and you'll see that there'll be, there'll be sections that you'll want to pay, you know, pay significant attention to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
It'd be extremely helpful to get that in a printed copy and not just a digital copy for the sake of
I agree. I agree. So that would be possible, Lisa?
Well, sure. You know, I, you know, it's, I'll send it to the town. It's not going to have exhibits with it. It's just going to have the, the decision itself, right? So it's 10, 12 pages, but we'll figure out how to get it to you. How's that?
Okay. So if there's nothing else or is there anything else anybody wants to discuss?
Just a question regarding all these waivers. What's the latitude or, or what's the deciding decisions on whether or not we grant these waivers or not? How does that work if, if we disagree with the waivers?
So they, they, if you ask them whether or not you grant the waiver, the question is, will it make the project uneconomical? Right? So obviously if you don't grant the waiver for frontage, they can't do the project. That's pretty, pretty clear what the answer is.
Right. Okay.
Enough of an answer?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. So if there's nothing else, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
Yes, please.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Meeting's adjourned.
See you later.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night.